Good afternoon, everybody. I am Indranil Mishra from Signal and Image Processing Area of Space Application Center, Isra, Andaba, India. And my paper is on INS-2B Nano-MX in Orbit Sensor Performance and Initial Data Processing Results. The other co-authors who have equally contributed and helped me in writing this paper are Abhishek Keshina, Tushar Shukla, Sunita Arya, Vivek Sharma, Neha Gaur, S. Manthira Murthy, and Devojyoti Dhar. So, INS-2B Nano-MX is a multi-spectral camera with four visible near infrared bands. The instrument is designed to image Huppa and the surrounding to cover its diverse landscape. Data products generation system that we have developed will perform the required radiometric and geometric processing of raw data to generate Nano-MX data products for applications using. The potential applications using Nano-MX data products span from land use, land cover mapping, forest area assessment, snow glacier studies, crop estimation, water quality index to other spaceborne studies. INS-2B Nano-MX sensor specification is listed here. So here, the band spectral regions lies from blue to NIR, that is near infrared. The radiometric resolution is ten bits, visual resolution is twenty-nine point five meter, and the swath of the Nano-MX sensor is one hundred sixteen kilometer. Talking about the radiometric performance of INS-2B Nano-MX, the radiometric performance of INS-2B Nano-MX sensor data is improved by instrument level correction using lab measured data. That we generally term as LTC, that is Light Transfer Characteristics Data. The major radiometric correction involves photo response non-uniformity correction, PRNU, to normalize the detector response and germi-pixel correction to suppress the horizontal stripe. But it is observed that residual horizontal stripe noise is still left in the image. So, to handle this problem, we have developed a non-convex optimization model and implemented in the data processing chain. So, this is the performance of horizontal stripe correction. So, here in the input image, which is the left-hand side image, you can see there are horizontal stripes present in the raw data, which is being corrected at the output image, which is shown in the right-hand side. INS-2B Nano-MX also suffered from bending noise, which is present in Nano-MX raw data, which we have not observed during pre-launch radiometric characterization. The bending results in low-intensity black particle patches in Nano-MX image at multiple location. So, this is actually the bending noise we can see in the input data on the left-hand side. So, you can see the vertical black patches in certain intervals in the image, which is being corrected using by updating the gain and bias coefficient of the look-up table. Talking about the SNR, that is the signal-to-noise ratio performance of INS-2B Nano-MX, it is a critical image quality parameter to assess the performance of remote sensing images. So, we have computed the SNR from the INS-2B Nano-MX in-orbit images at twenty percent LBO. So, what we have observed is that from blue to NIR, the SNR values meets the specification. The specification is there at twenty percent LBO, and it is the, from the images, whatever the values we got is much higher. So, it meets the SNR specification. Also, the MTF performance, that is modulation transfer function performance, we have estimated to characterize the spatial quality of remote sensing imaging sensor. We have computed using edge method. And here, we can see from blue to NIR, the MTF specification is point one-five-seven, that is for blue, green, and red. And for NIR, it is point seventy. The estimated MTF from the Nano-MX in-orbit images is much higher than the specified in. So, it also meets the MTF specification. Now, talking about the geometric perform. INS-2B Nano-MX remote sensing images suffer from geometric distortion due to spatial misalignment of the spectral bands, detected look angle error, uncertainty in platform position and velocity, attitude error, and terrain relief displacement. So, initially, we need to do a geometric calibration, which will reestimate the pre-launch geometric measurement to correct the system-level geometric distortion. It is found that for most of the cases, we got the system-level location accuracy of Nano-MX after calibration within six kilometer and internal distortion is within ten pixels across multiple imaging acquisition. Then, we also need to characterize the band-to-band registration. So, band-to-band mis-registration is there in INS-2B Nano-MX due to focal length mismatch between the spectral band. At the system level, it is observed that the maximum pixel shift between spectral band is around ten pixels. The BBR stability across the imaging gate is found to be plus minus two pixels. Then, we need to achieve a subpixel BBR. So, to achieve that, we done an automatic feature matching of extreme bands with respect to the central spectral band. We have developed an approach that employs scale-invariant feature transform with motion spooned, constant outlayer removing technique to prune the match key points and bring the BBR accuracy at the subpixel level. So visually, we can able to analyze what is the BBR. So, in the input image, this is a structure we can able to see and the color distortion and blur we can able to analyze in the visual assessment in the input image, which is not BBR corrected. So, band-to-band mis-registration is present in the input. Whereas after the BBR correction in the output image, we can see that there is no color distortion, the blur is not there, and the spectral bands are spatially aligned over each other. Talking about the quantitative performance at the data product level, we have divided the image into three segments, that is region one, region two, and region three. And we have estimated the band-to-band registration or the spectral band-to-band registration with respect to the band three, which is the central band. And we found that it is within plus minus point two-five pixel for all the regions, and it meets the required specific. Now, talking about the location accuracy improvement. So, Nano-MX system-level georeference product location accuracy we need to improve because it is around six kilometers. So, we developed a feature matching with reference image sources. So, we have chosen latest acquisition landsat eight-nine level-one terrain corrected products as evidence images, which have a location accuracy within seven to thirteen meters and found to have spectral band similar to Nano-MX. So, here we go for a multi-stage feature matching with shift and ransack at cross level and ORB that is oriented, rotated, and brief descriptor with segmented affine transformation model at fine. So, visually, we can able to see that we swap, after the location accuracy improvement, we swap the images over each other. So, this is the Nano-MX orthorectified data is swapped over landcity, and we can see that the feature continuity is maintained when we swap the images over each other at different feature targets. And then, we also quantify the numbers and average numbers both in across track and along track at different feature targets which is being taken. And we found that the location accuracy is within hundred meter, average location accuracy is within hundred meter after the improvement. Now, talking about the reflectance profile analysis. So, we took the Nano-MX level-one productified data to generate level-two top-of-atmosphere reflectance and surface reflectance data. So, to estimate toward reflectance, we compute the solid-synthetic distance at the imaging time. And for SR, that is the surface reflectance, we need external parameters like water vapor ozone and aerosol that we take from different satellite source. And it is found that the water and vegetation toward reflectance profile from Nano-MX image shows a similar trend as the water vegetation spectrum from blue NIR wavelength, and it is similar to landcity oil light toward. So, here in the graph, we can able to see that toward reflectance profile. The upper graph is of water vegetation of Nano-MX toward reflectance profile from blue to NIR. And the below graph is of landcity nine toward reflectance profile, and the trend is almost similar. Then, we also done a surface reflectance cross-validation. So, the Nano-MX SR data is cross validated with closest acquisition of landset nine OLI SR data. So, Nano-MX imaging date that we have over Bhutan is of eight December twenty-two. And we get a very closest date is of nine December twenty-two of landset nine with a difference in the imaging time as well. And we try to compute the imaging time at the scene center. And the trend what we have observed of Nano-MX at visible spectral band is closely matched with landset nine SR at corresponding spectral band. But there is a deviation in NIR band spectra because due to different wavelength ranges of INS-2B Nano-MX and landset nine OLI. So, through the graph, we can analyze it better. So, here we can see that blue, green, red, and NIR, and the reflectance values of blue, green, and red is almost similar of landset nine and INS-2B. But the orange color is landset nine and blue one is INS-2B. Whereas there is a deviation in NIR because there is a difference in the wavelength range of band four of, that is the NIR band of Nano-MX and NIR band of landset. Then, we also done, or generated a Bhutan country-level mosaic. So, this is generated using best possible Nano-MX reflectance images over Bhutan from November twenty-two to April twenty-three. And the mosaic is generated in such a way such that the cloudy pixels should be avoided to their next testing. And we can see the mosaic itself. So, this is the Bhutan country-level mosaic we can able to see. So, the small nano-satellite INS-2B Nano-MX able to map the complete Bhutan within the mission life of six months. So, this is one of the achievement of the Indian nano-satellite, which is developed by Indian Space Research Organization for Bhutan. And here, this is FCC, that is false color composite. And we can see the different feature targets like forest because Bhutan is almost seventy percent of forest region, snow, cloud, and all other features we can able to see in a mosaic view. So, this is some of the latest images of INS-2B Nano-MX over Bhutan. So, this is a natural color composite image, and we can see the capital of Bhutan, that is the temple on the left-hand side. And there is another region that is Bangipurong, which we can able to see. This is one more image of Bhutan, and we can able to see the Paro International Airport. So, this is the only international airport in Bhutan, and this is one of the, we can say, the very difficult airport for pilots to land on because of the hilly terrain. This is one more image of twenty-two October to the forest cover region of Bhutan, that is the Fipsso Wildlife Century and the Manus River, which is a trans, which is a transboundary river between the India and Bhutan, which is flowing, we can able to see the image. So, in the conclusion, we can see, say that INS-2B Nano-MX in-orbit sensor data, we have characterized for both radiometric and geometric aspects. And the noise in the form of bending and horizontal stripes is corrected. Then, SNR and MTF measurements are also computed, and it meets the specification. Talking about the geometry part, that band-to-band registration is also characterized, and it is corrected to meet the RMC specification of plus minus point two-five, let it a product level. And also, we done an in-flight geometric calibration to improve the system-level geometric performance. And further, the location accuracy is improved using image processing-based method, that is multi-stage feature match. And finally, that surface reflectance data of Nano-MX is also cross validated with landset nine OLI surface reflectance data, and we observed to be matched closely with vegetation spec. So, these are the few of the references that we have used, and it is there in our paper also, cited in our paper. And thank you very much. So, on the last, I just want to show, this is a 3D visualization of Nano-MX orthorectified reflectance data data of imaging eight December twenty-two over digital elevation model. This is, we have used SRT in thirty meters, which is openly available. So, that rectified gets properly. And this data sets, we already given to our Bhutan counterpart, and now they are working on the land use and cover based mapping and changes classification and other image processing advancements, processing techniques. Friends, sir, on that. So, thank you very much for listening me, and questions are welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mishra. Is he able to listen?
Yes, sir. Yes, I able to, I able to listen to him.
Yeah, he's able to listen. Oh, okay. Now, we'll take up questions, participants, we can ask. The paper is open for participants.
Online participants also.
Also there, okay. You can also see online? So, we have a lot of time. No?
Online?
Yes. Please, mic?
They will be able to listen.
No, you can come. You can come. Because it is speaks from here.
Just confirm once, Indranil, that you are able to listen to the question, yeah?
Yes, I can able to, I can able to listen you.
In the, I have a question, like even after improvement in location, why the numbers are around one hundred only?
Means hundred meter location accuracy after improvement, that is what you were talking about?
Yes.
Yeah. The reason behind that is that because we, this is a nano-satellite, so the spacecraft burst is also a nano-spacecraft burst. And here, the drift rate is on the higher side. So, the drift rate of the satellite is around point one degree per second. So, because of this drift rate, even if we able to correct it at the center, there is some at the corner pixels where the location accuracy may can, may go up to hundred meter. So, mainly because of the drift rate or the platform stability, this location accuracy we have achieved within hundred meters.
What can be the best number?
Pardon me?
What can be best? In the center, it says it is best.
Center it is best, whereas at the edges, it may happen because, because it is had a relatively higher platform. Means platform stability is around point one degree per second. It is not a very stable platform because it is a nano-satellite. So, it may goes up to hundred meters at the edges. At the center, it is within a pixel with respect to the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, the question, I not able to listen it properly. Is it related to what is the radiative transfer model we have used? Okay, so for, okay, for our Nano-MX, we have used the six space radiative transfer model, which is openly available. So, that model we have used. And but the thing is that for reflectance calculation, surface reflectance specifically, we don't have bands here for aerosol and water vapor. So, we have used the concurrent inside 3D data. From there, we compute the aerosol and water vapors, and those things we have interested in our data processing file. The radiative transfer model is successful.
Even though band limits are different, but it's thirty percent more in NIR, maybe talking?
Yeah, because the wavelength range of NIR and the wavelength range of NIR in Nano-MX and the wavelength range of NIR in Landset nine is almost, it's not matching. So, where our Nano-MX is ending, the wavelength range from that range, the landset nine started. So, if we harmonize it, then we can bring it at the same level, but we just want to show the as-it-is values, the raw surface reflectance values. So, within thirty percent is okay in that. I modify?
Okay, thank you.
She asked this NIR band and then landshade, lot of difference.
Yes, yes, correct, sir.
Homogeneous area.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter resolution and that value, whatever there. Landshade bandwidth, nano bandwidth, even though small difference, you should not get that much difference in your reflectance.
No, I will show you, sir, once more, just a minute. Sir, the wavelength range is different, sir, for Nano-MX and landset nine.
Whereas the landset is very small, vegetation, vegetation matters.
It depends on feature to feature. And you mentioned MTF for the transfer function, green is light. And SNR two is more, and red also almost same. Why MTF is it's not so much difference? And why so differences we see there? SNR is very good, blue.
Yeah, yeah, sir. Actually, at the system level, means at the payload level itself, the MTF, when we measured from our lab measurement, it is good for blue, green, and red spectral bands. Whereas for NIR at the system level itself, at the detector level, if you see at the subsystem level, the MTF is low. So, that's why the MTF is just ten percent if you consider the case of NIR. So, this is at the detector level itself, at the hardware level.
And one slide seventeen or something, landshade Y axis is different, nano Y axis is different. Why one is percentage, one is fraction, I think, then. Slide eleven, eleven or eighteen, sorry, seventeen.
Actually, I cannot able to go back in my, okay, just a minute.
Different axis in.
Sir, this one you are talking about?
This one, previous one.
Previous one, okay. Ah, okay, okay, yeah, 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 correct, sir, correct, correct. Here, actually, this is, we have taken directly from the paper, the below one. Whereas the upper one, we have computed. So, yes, the axis wise, it should be the multiplied in two hundred, then it will be. Yeah, you are correct, sir. Your point is correct in that. The axis is different in the graph.
Okay, thank you. There's just one more.
Yes, sir.
What are some of these techniques for analysis of the data? You have used one-on-model and one-on-techniques, right? Now, what is intuition behind choosing that particular model and batteries?
Sir, your voice is very people, sir. This, you are talking about which part, sir?
No, no. You have used some model and technique to process your data, right?
Yes, 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 correct. For like, for geometry, we need to use some multi-stage feature matching.
What is the intuition behind selection of that particular model and techniques?
Okay, sir, the thing is that in Nano-MX, if I consider one technique like we want to improve the location accuracy. So, what is happening here? The location accuracy is around six kilometer system level on an average. So, only one feature detection cannot able to solve the problem. So, it gives an intuition that we need to use a multi-stage feature matching, where we need to improve the gross level error, so that it will bring within three, four pixels. And then, we need to go for a final level of feature matching using like SIFP, like scale-invariant feature transform, to bring the project at the final.
My question is, whether you have compared that one model, what was your opinion with any other existing model?
Yes, yes, sir. This we have compared with the state-of-the-art techniques, sir. This more, this we have already compared, and we, it is published in TGRS, sir, also, the technique.
No, in your slides, I could not.
Okay, okay. Means I have just referred it, actually, just a minute. Yeah, here I have just referred it, eleven. You can able to see, right, sir?
Yeah.
So, in the eleven, if I seen the reference, I can go to the. Oh, so I not put the number, but this is, sir, here. You can able to see there is a publication of I Mishra, that is IEEE Transactional Geosense and Remote Sensing Forum, Framework for Image Registration Using Multi-Stage Feature Detection. From below, it is one, two, three, four, five, sixth one, sir, from the below.
From the below, sixth one?
Yes, sir. Form, I Mishra, I am the first author itself, I Mishra. We have published recently on twenty-twenty-one, sir, and this is the technique we have used here once. Thank you, sir.
And you compared one-to-one only for vegetation now, for what about other features?
Yeah, yeah, sir. Here, in this slides, we have shown for vegetation, but we have also tested at water body. Then, our soil and other targets there also, it is the SNR and SNR performance is meeting the specification.
Okay.
So, this is primarily designed for Bhutan, this nano-satellite. And vegetation or the forest is one of the major class there. So, that's why we have shown in the presentation on.
No, also important. Okay, Indranil Mishra. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. So, can I stop the sharing, sir?
Ah, you can stop sharing.
Okay, stop shaking. For this presentation, radiometric cross validation of resource set two and two A list three sensor, surface reflectance properties with radcalit data. Way, ETV, Sarabia, Monoburu, Serma, and Dakarshalan.
Good afternoon, myself, Kaiti from NRSE. My paper title is Radiometric Cross Validation of Resource Set Two, Two A List Three Sensor Surface Reflectance Products with Radcalit Data. Actually, resource set two sensor was launched in two thousand eleven. And follow-up mission, this was at two A in two thousand sixteen December. These two missions together will give so many applications over Indian terrain. This three sensor is linear imaging self-scanning sensor. This three means already that is series of sensor. In IRS series, one C, one D, list one, list two is there. This three is the satellite in this resource acto mission. There are four spectral bands in this list three sensor. Namely, green band covering point five-two-five-nine micrometer, six-two-two-six-eight, point sixty-two-six-eight micrometer. Red band and point seven-seven-two-point-eight-six, NIR, one-point-five-to-one-point-seven swirband. So, four multi-spectral bands with the multi-resolution of twenty-three-point-five meter. And the revisit time is twenty-four days. So, twenty-four days, one same path will be covered by this list three sensor. So, we have generated surface reflectance products. So, the outline of presentation is like this, interaction about surface reflectance products, data sets, methodology, and validation results, conclusions. Also, the image depicts the resource set two picture, side by list three camera, showing four bands. And then, radcalit, radiometric calibration network. So, satellite measure the reflectance, which is coming out of the for optical sensors, sources, sun only. So, when the signal is traveling from sun, it is attended by atmosphere that hits the ground, and again, it will travel to sensor. So, again, same time, it will hit by atmosphere. So, there upcoming and outgoing, incoming and outgoing, both radiations are attended by atmosphere. So, this atmosphere, we have to correct, that is corrected product is called surface reflectance product. So, that definition shows that is a fraction of incoming solar radiation that is reflected from up-surface. So, whatever measured at satellite is the top of the atmosphere, which is combined with atmosphere plus signal. So, that atmosphere, we are removing it in surface reflectance product. So, this is the base product for any up-surface parameter in solar effective wavelengths. So, it improves comparison between different time of period images, different satellite images of the multi-satellites, multi-time. So, we can compare with cross, compare with any other sensors also. And so many applications involve using this product. So, already, we have generated surface reflectance products from these two satellites. This is fully automated. Already products are available at Bunidi as bottom of the atmosphere, name coining as bottom of the atmosphere. And this two and two A, even though it is a follow-up mission, there is slight difference in sensor characteristics and performance. So, we have harmonized the RS two sensor with respect to RS two A. RS two is a recent sensor. So, we, this RS two A is matching with simultaneous landset eight and nine. So, we have taken as a reference and then harmonized RS two sensor. So, the radiometric accuracy is better than ninety-five percent, validated with institutes and targets like Tar Desert, Desert Sand, and Gulmar's Snow Target. This actually validation is two types. The one is absolute and one is relative. So, here, relative validation, we have done with landset OLI sensor. And absolute, we have done with Tar Desert, ground-measured desert sand profile, and Gulmar's Snow Target. Vegetation, it will vary with so many seasonal effects, so we couldn't do with vegetation spectra. Uh vegetation, it will vary with so many seasonal effects, so we couldn't do with vegetation spectra. Uh this and all done in Indian terrain only, so the geometric accuracy of the sensor is within one pixel. And products can be added through Bunidi portal. Uh few analysis ready data sets also generated uh over three sample areas from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty two. So analysis ready data are useful for uh multi-series, multi-temporal analysis without any user effort. So this paper is only absolute validation of S R products with Radcalnet data. So these are the data sets we have taken, so these Radcalnet network, this is the network of five test source. Uh over global, uh maintained by C O's Committee on Up-the-Observation Satellites. Incorporation with C O's Radcalnet was established. So uh site names in short, R U, R V U, that is Railroad Valley Playa in U S A. L C F R is the La Caru in France and Gona is Gobebe in Namibia. Uh and B T S N, B S N is China, Bautou. So the path row scheming is there for RS two and R two A, these are the second column is the path and row. Uh of the RS two and two A satellites, these are fixed path rows scheme for these satellites and latitude, longitude of the site. So number of images taken for the validation and area in meters, so thousand meters in R U V. Since it is a desert, all all are desert sites, so and local atmospheric conditions are also considered in these uh these site cases. And altitude of the site is given. Uh so our list three sensor is twenty three meter, so we have taken within that radius, how many pixels are falling? In case of R U V, thousand meter radius, so we have taken forty two pixels, uh forty two pixel average value we have considered. In L C F R and our small areas covering, so we have taken two two pixel average. And data availability, a few sites are established in two thousand uh April thirteen, so we had taken data from April thirty. Other sites fifteen and July seventeen, May sixteen, so data is availability from that period onwards. So the instruments available at the sites at uh ground being radiometers at one nanometer spectral resolution. And A S D field spec spectrometer, ten nanometer, uh mostly ground measured spectrometer meters are used and they have. Uh a set restability units and peer reviewed also, so the accuracy of instrument is given like this. So we have used for our absolute validation. Uh these are the site locations, uh yellow is the exact location. Uh these are the images uh viewed by RS two and two A, left is RS two, right is RS two A. This is railroad valley uh topmost, top left and uh right is Gona site, down is La Caru and. Bautou, China, so uh data is measured at every thirty minute interval. From morning nine to three P M, since it passes a sensor, so nine to three P M only, we can measure the reflectance values. Uh methodology, so we have generated surface reflectance products using success radiative transfer code, success is the. Uh second simula- second signal or second simulation of satellite signal in solar spectrum. Uh this is the radiative transfer code, so here you have you, we have used the success code because it is freely available and. Uh it is well validated with the other things and it is giving more accurate results. Uh so here we have used the success model along with atmospheric parameters like. Aerosol optical depth, water vapor and ozone. Uh globally, we have taken from camps data, that is uh Kopernikas Atmospheric Monetary Services is there. So they are providing uh data at forty kilometer resolution, spatial resolution overall the globe. Every day we will have that atmospheric parameters. And then each site is equipped with automatic ground-based radiometer. Uh with uh spe- spectral resolution of one nanometer and ten nanometer, the spectral range is four hundred to two thousand five hundred nanometer sampled at. Ten nanometer or one nanometer, so these sites are uh used for validation of. Uh this three and Sentinel multispectral images also. So here we have uh our uh list three sensor is multispectral, so only that within that band range only we have the signal. Suppose point five to point five eight means within that spectrum, we have one value only while measuring the from the satellite. Whereas in case of ground reflectance, we have each ten nanometer, one one value is there, so within that band we had to get data, so uh we are. Convolving spectral response curves with ground measured range, so we can get only one value in that pass band. So here that formula we have used is uh lambda one two, lambda two is point five two two five eight for uh green band like that. All bands, four bands, we have different relative spectral response curves, so we convolve with relative spectral response and. Uh ground measured uh spectrometer reflectance profiles, so we'll get one value from uh one band. Like that RS two and two A, both list three responses convolve with this ground measured signals. And the uh each thirty nan- thirty meter, sorry, thirty minute they are giving the uh spectra. So we have taken only local pass time, because same time we had to take the ground measured and satellite pass. So here right show shows the uh methodology, so different bands we will take and then we'll generate S R product. Extracting R O S from the R O S of the Radcalnet from the image. Then Radcalnet bottom of the atmosphere values, actually, this radiometric calibration. Uh values will be used for post-launch calibration of uh sensors. So they will give top of, they will generate top of the atmosphere, here Ulta we are doing, opposite we are doing. So bottom of the atmosphere, they convert into top of the atmosphere for users, but our purpose is bottom of the atmosphere, so we use only bottom of the atmosphere values. Then convolution will do and then comparison will do within the same band, so this is the profile showing at a different. Uh location, that five locations. Actually, ten thirty U T C for La Caru are that railroad value is eighteen thirty means they that local time we are considered here. Uh in case of Bautou, we have only up to thousand nanometer only, so swir- swirband we can't validate for Bautou. So they are giving values from four hundred to thousand nanometer only. And we have used some statistical based metrics like root means where ever. Uh symmetric mean absolute percentage error and mean absolute deviation, these are the some metrics used. To validate the ground R C N measurements with S R product. So these are the results, uh so. Here down X axis, we have taken uh Radcalnet R C N chart, such current reflectance values. And Y axis, we have taken uh sensor, this is for RS two A, RS two A list three sensor. So here the results for band two, three, four, five, that band two is uh green band, red band, N I R and swirband. Uh then mean absolute deviation is showing uh for each site, we have taken mean absolute deviation. Uh since it is launched in two thousand sixteen, so we have, December it is launched, so we have taken data from two thousand seventeen hours for this uh sensor. And root mean square error is uh like this for different, so each uh band and for each test site. And this is for RS two list three sensor, uh actually RS two is launched in two thousand eleven, so. Some sites are available from two thousand thirteen hundred, so all data sets availability we have taken from uh R C N observations. So here also we have plotted R C N observation versus RS two list three surface reflectance. Uh similar in mean absolute deviation and R M S C also plotted. Uh here in case of RS two, little deviations we have observed and this is the overall. Uh regression fit for RS two and RS two A versus R C measurements. Uh left is RS two A and right is RS two. Uh these are the accuracy matrix uh overall observations. Also, we have measured uh structural similarity index measure, R M S C, slope, offset, R square and. S M A P, these all parameters they have measured between R C and R A over all sites for all years. Now in case of R A, matching is more, but when in case of R two, deviations are, little deviations are observed. And this is the temporal profile, also all cloud-free observations and. We have taken so to almost nearly thirty five to forty observations we have taken, since these are all global sites. India means every twenty four days we will have one image, but because all sites are global, so we have only few observations over these. Sites, so almost thirty five to forty observation only we could to take. Uh so the number of here red line shows the RS two, two A, uh left is for R two and right is RS two A. Uh blue line for R C N observations, so the spectral profile pattern is almost matching. Only the magnitude difference is there in both cases, uh but whereas in R A, uh this was at two A, it is almost. Matching with R C N observations. And these are conclusions, so the products generated from, several generated from RS two, two A are in good agreement with Radcal measurements. So absolute validation, usable capacity from various remote sensing application. So overall uncertainty in case of R two, it is fifteen percent, whereas in case of our resource at two A, it was observed ten percent. Uh so the deviations may occur due to the atmospheric correction model, so we have used a success atmospheric correction model using. Uh Kopernikas atmospheric camps data. Also, there may be a deviation in atmospheric parameter retrieval also. And then the source or whatever R C N networks used is only point based observed at that time. So there may be small deviation in atmospheric model and the actually atmosphere data measured at both Radcalnet and our software used. So the radiometric stability is being maintained in the both sensor since launch, the last profile, temporal profile, it shows that. The sensor is not at all deviated radiometrically, so the since launch, it is maintaining the stability. So the this S R product can be used as one of the main layer in analysis ready data, so. In future, we are going to generate analysis ready data, uh right now we are generated for Indian regions, few uh few places. And globally also if demand is there, we are able to generate for global data sets also. Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Kriti. Okay, the paper is open for questions. It's online also, we see when we ask questions, online also.
Uh. Indranil this side.
Is mad, push question. Uh thank you for the presentation, so uh I keep on sliding and or left, uh when he's seeing goal is. Can slide can. Because. I mean, on the right, this cross that way, way part. Uh okay, it's actually focused on.
Hmm.
Yeah, this is eleven, uh this. Uh this.
Table you are telling, I'm just plotting.
Slide eleven, now this is, this is eleven, no, no, no. Nine, ten, uh eight. Okay, uh yeah, yeah.
So if we see uh the whole day and hour of your eyes, but so uh like it's increasing. In addition, increasing to the bad to be due to B five, so why it is that?
Uh actually, we have green band, red band, N R and swirband, four bands are. So when we do atmosphere corrections, green and red bands are most attended with aerosols. And whereas N I R and swir, these two bands are attended with water paper. So the input answer parameters are proper, then this maybe correct. So I'll make this, so this red and N I R, green and N R bands absorb the atmospheric conditions. So while removing that thing. That is the reason why that the green and uh red bands are more, there is a difference of N R and swir. It is more and that in case of R two, our swirband performance is lows when the launch itself, so that is, that's why then. Launching with the sensor itself, it is getting low val- low values from the launch.
Okay, so still remains B five.
Yes, B.
So uh but uh.
That's why we have harmonized uh RS two with RS two A, in case of RS three, it is not the. So okay, if you see that last thirty eight percent, it is magic, so that's why we have harmonized RS two A with R, R two with R C.
Uh but uh like so for uh let's say B two to B four, uh so. R C N is also having the same uh band configuration and they have been also.
No, no, they are not giving band configuration, they, here we have taken sensor reflect, the sensor, relative spectral response. But in the case of R C, they are measuring continuously. They are comparing with our band response.
Okay.
So they are measuring continuously, but there are in other case, uh this quick pass.
Thank you. Uh any questions? Oh please. Corrected uh giving, giving genetic.
Yes, sir, I think first model, we are giving a vision time, nothing.
Your exercise and you and you're saying, uh it is in respect to which one?
That is actually, we had taken two values, R C N value and S R value, the embedded values only I did not image. Even though it is image matrix parameter, but I had taken as a two values.
Uh you, you did not tell me the important.
Sir.
R two, R, R A, no?
Yes, sir, resource set two, resource set.
What is improved, you can see nice results you are getting, outward wise, something improved, that's why you are getting better results. Or something we are processing is improved.
No, sir, actually sensor only, sensor itself, actually not sensor person. So but.
But it related to your results.
We are related to result, R two A is better, sir, when comparing to R two. Sensor in parameters, they might have changed, sir, actually the, that is R C in two thousand eleven. So with that time to two thousand sixteen, five years period, so they might have changed the.
Calibration.
Liberation.
Uh anyone, anyone can share online questions, hello, uh online, you see, actually you are seeing mobile, no?
I am on mobile.
No one, no, no.
No.
Imran is there, Imran is there.
Indra Neil.
Sir, I'm there, I, can I have, can I ask someone question?
Yes.
Uh Kriti Madam, this is regarding this resource set two, so the numbers looks very good. Uh but the resource set two, these numbers is of the latest images or these are of the two thousand eleven, twelve images.
All together, all together, we have taken two thousand thirteen hours, because a very good value, value play. Two thousand thirteen hours data is it, so two thousand thirteen to uh two thousand twenty three May.
Okay.
Together, this is overall, overall valuation.
Okay. Okay, maybe the sensor reading is also playing, okay, madam, fine, thank you.
And the calibration test side.
Yes, sir.
On the, there are a lot of differences, even though those are, now you said.
Yes, sir.
Deserts are different, like that so much difference will you?
Yes, sir, desert, railroad value is having high reflectance values, uh where every La Caru, La Caru is also having. Not, not, Gobe, Gobe and railroad values are having high reflectance, swirband up to points and also it is going to reflectance. Whereas in Bautou and La Caru, it is not that much. It's a different type of desserts, sir, not similar to.
Some vegetation also there.
No, sir, it's pure dessert.
But you have see, it shows some.
No, no, that is side, sideways, actually, that is not in that image, image it is there, but. This is only that, uh but indoor only, so yeah, so this is only my location. So there only we have taken our region of interest and then we have taken the.
Okay, uh that is, several questions now. Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Uh we have poster presentation now, one, one, four, by.
Square, yeah. So next present this, the poster carry. Experiences of radio frequency and the various signatures in salt across with expensive bags. The connection. Projected and who always are this number of everyone. In our own province, okay, space application. So this presentation is all experience.
Actually it's in that mode, no?
We have to present local.
Is it okay?
You can bypass the lyrics or. Audio, audio.
Can save as E D F N then. That is easy option.
Uh you don't have a different P P T.
Yes, sir, I don't have it.
Oh.
So I thought it is going to be posted, I brought the same thing what I have.
Yes, even though you have ten minutes, you can take half an hour. You last, uh you last. Others three two, one is from America, one is from India only.
How to do? Key.
Uh.
Actually, yeah, my.
Otherwise you use laptop.
I will give.
Online, online.
Yes.
Huh? Or a. Didn't. Part. You can. Or whatever. It's something. So. You see. That is. They. But. And. And. Okay.
Shall I start first? Good afternoon, everyone. So I will be presenting the experiences of R F I signatures in SAR because different frequency bands. Uh I am Pariksh Tarasen, my co-author Kishma Yagarwal and V M Ramanathan. R F I observations in SAR, basically R F I in SAR is caused by the radio frequency sources operating in the same frequency band as in we are operating. And uh these are basically the electromagnetic interference signal that appears in SAR echo data. And various kind of features we can see in the azimuth time range frequency spectrum as well as the processed images. Uh we will see in the subsequent slides how are the artifacts that we are seeing. So broadly, if we are to classify the R F I artifacts in, you can say the azimuth time range frequency spectrum. So they can be classified into broadly into two categories. One is a time stationary narrow band. Where time stationary narrow band or shortly called as a T S N P represents the R F I whose bandwidth is narrow. And the center frequency remains stationary with respect to the azimuth time. While the other class, the other end member of the family is a T V W B where the are, that is sign varying wide band. Uh where the it represents the R F I whose bandwidth is wide and the center frequency is varying with respect to the azimuth time. So these two are basically the end members of the last type of R F Is that can exist. Uh most uh any kind of R F I will basically fall into these, between these two categories or in these two things. So uh it introduces various kind of cross patterns, haziness and other kind of interference patterns in the focus images. And why mitigation is required? Because it affects the overall quality of the SAR image, especially in the, you can say low S N R regions. Uh like oceans, lakes or under common new ice, these regions are very severely affected and the you can say the targets are. Sometimes they are masked to an extent that their detection also becomes difficult. So that is the main motivation and the judge and it further improves the overall contrast and the image interpretability. So this is just to give a feel that how, what kind of artifacts that are generally observed. So this one is the mutual interference between the central one and radar set two satellite over Italy in two thousand fifteen. So this is the interference between two, two satellites. That is mutual interference and the other four cases, these four cases have been studied in this paper. And these are basically, the you can say the interfering sources is some basically radar, whether that can be a Doppler weather radar or it can be a aviation or military radar. And in some cases we are, sometimes we are able to figure out the interfering sources and sometimes we are not able to figure out. So anyways, uh so this is the least interference in the above pulsar L band over Alaska Barrow. Then we have an interference in X band over R S A two B, that is over Vaisa River in China. The this one is the interference in C band uh uh in the U S zero four satellites observed over Nigumbul Lake in Sri Lanka. And the last one is the interference in S band. So uh irrespective of the band, it can manifest itself with various kind of features you must be seeing. Like here the feature is different. Uh for X band, the you can say the interference pattern in the focus images are totally different with respect to the element. So potential sources in different bands could be different, like for in L band, uh here we have regional navigation satellite systems and the military radars that are operating. So they are most likely to cause the, you can say interference for the L band. Uh in S band, it could be the potential sources could be the, you can say R F I due to the four G L T or the Wi Fi frequencies in S band. X band we are having the Doppler weather radars are operating. And one instance that I have shown in this paper, that is the X band R I S A two B case. That we will see, so there it is basically the Doppler weather radar that we could investigate finally, that the R F I was because of that. And then C band, uh mainly the main threat to C band is the, you can say the allocation. Uh to allocation between five point three five gigahertz to five point four seven gigahertz to the R LAN or the W LAN. So that is basically the, you can say, the potential source of the R F I that can appear for the C band. What are the mitigation techniques? So basic, these are the very basic, you can say classification. So one is that out of band filtering, it is to reject the R F I signal outside the sensor band. And the other one is the geographic avoidance, that you operate over the region where the R F I is not present. But that is very difficult and practically basically not possible for, you can say airborne system and even more difficult for spacewalk system. Then one is the frequency avoidance, that you don't use that frequency. But anyways, that spectrum is common only, so that has to be shared by various users. So anyways, that is also not a practical option. So what we are left with finally is to develop some techniques and to for the R F I detection and mitigation. So that we can improve the quality of images and then further for further applications. So this is what we will be discussing. So R F I detection mitigation techniques, if you see. So uh though there are various techniques, so these are basic four techniques what we have come across in the literature. One is based on the, you can say, analysis of the azimuth time range frequency characteristics of the R F I. Uh the first one. So it is based on the, you can say, analysis of the R F Is in the range frequency spectrum of the SAR raw data. And the technique is based on the Z test combined with the Ducky by weights to estimate the robust statistics for the R F I detection. So we, you can say, divide the range spectrum or the azimuth time range frequency spectrum into the blocks in the azimuth and the range. Uh once and then uh once we operate in the, you can say, in the range and then we operate in the azimuth across different blocks. We detect different kind of R F Is and then we generate a mask. And we apply that mask to the spectrum for correction and so like that it happens. Then the next one is the analysis of the based on the eigenvalues. So here like what you can say, this is also published in one of our papers also. So we have, uh here we take pulse by pulse, so every pulse we take. And then we segment that pulse into various vectors. And then we do, you can say, a principal component kind of analysis. And then you can say we identify the components that represents the radio frequency signatures. And then we re-project that and we generate that R F I subspace matrix that is subtracting from the original matrix to get the R F I corrected data. So other methods are also there, like the least means where adaptive filters developed by Scott Hensley from J P L. Uh basically here like it is somewhat insensitive to wideband R F I cases. Uh as have been reported by the authors in some cases. And the other one is the photoses detection where you detect the tailness of the distribution. Uh so basically these methods fall into the category, if you, from the philosophical perspective, you see in the outlier detection kind of thing. Okay, so uh these are the, this is the, you can say the framework where like. You can see that both the frequency domain and time domain method. So from after the raw data, we take the range of fifty, then we apply the frequency domain method, then we take the range inverse Fourier transform. And then using the range of the algorithm, we process the images. For the time domain case, we don't have to take the F F Ts actually for correction, we can simply apply on the raw data and then we can go for the image focusing. So this is the R F I signature at the L band. So here you can see in the range frequency spectrum within sixteen megahertz, this is for the Alaskansar case or the Alaska Barrow region. And you can see that various kind of R F I signatures are there, so mostly that is sign varying wideband R F I that is depicted over here. So this has been studied in the literature, so what the authors have reported that this was basically due to the federal aviation administration, the north warning system radars. Operated by the federal aviation administration, so these radars are basically located over the Alaska Barrow regions and the R F I was because of that. So when we apply that R F I suppression method, then as you can see that on the right side, the range spectrum after R F I suppression, the you can say the. High energy R F I that has been suppressed and the corresponding impact you can see on the right most in the R F I impact on the raw data amplitude. There also you can see that after the R F I suppression, the amplitude that the high energy R F I that bright lines, now they have been suppressed. So after this, when we process the image, so what we could see that, this was the original image. Where you can see that in this region that around thirty two point three D V that is the average power. So after the R F I suppression, that average power comes out around twenty four point two D V. So around, in this case, we are observing an A D V improvement. So uh so and additionally, you could see that the image contrast that has greatly improved. And it further improves that image interpretability also, overall radiometric quality is improved. Then percentage R F I is computed, that is computed on the range frequency spectrum where we just come, the total number of points. Or the frequency points that have been flagged in the range frequency spectrum, that we compute as a ratio to the total number of frequency points. So that is around one point three percent in this case. This is an R F I signature at the C band, where you can see that in the F R S one board of U S zero four. Uh over Nigumbul, Udon, Sri Lanka, the percentage R F I in this case is two point one six percent. And here the R F I like, as in the case of Alaskansar, it is spreaded over the entire frequency spectrum. Here it is not like that, so here it is only a, or a specific part it is coming. Okay, so that, if you see in the process image and the R F I suppressed, uh range spectrum. Uh for some similarly as in the Alaskansar case, so it is suppressing the high energy R F I. And then you see the processed images, you can see that only this part of the image, this is just a part of the image, image is a big one. So the here only that R F I artichoke is coming. So that is now after suppression, that improvement is often. This is another case of this R I S A two B case, where in the spot mode, that is a step map, that is a spot mode three five one eight four eight five or Vaisa River, China. Where this R F I was adopted. So this spot mode operates in three hundred megahertz bandwidth and the sampling frequency is three seventy five megahertz. So what we observed that R F I is observed, basically there is a Doppler weather radar that operates at nine point three two five megahertz, gigahertz. So what happens that with a sampling frequency of three seventy five megahertz. Uh it gets, you can say that replica of that spectrum forms at, you can say hundred megahertz in this spectrum. So because now here in this, this operates at nine point six. So when nine point three two five that gets sampled at three seventy five megahertz, it forms a replica at least nine point seven gigahertz. With coming into this three hundred, it is plus minus one fifteen megahertz bandwidth, so that is observed over here. This is the hundred megahertz. This is getting aliased into the spectrum, so this is like how it happen. So sometimes it may so happen that actually within that spectrum, your R F I source must not be present. But what will happen when you will sample it, so if, if the energy is high enough, it will get aliased into your part of the spectrum and it can, uh you can say. Uh degrade the image quality severely. You can see in the average range spectrum also that at the hand hundred hertz, hundred megahertz, the you can say around five to six D V improvement is there after R F I suppression. And the percentage R F I is around two point one six percent in this case. Other sources are also observed like data frequencies sweeping across time. So that we tried to investigate, but we could not find the actual any source for that. So that could be some, due to some other source, but this was one that could be investigated was because of the Doppler radar. So to conclude, like R F I artifacts in the range spectrum can manifest in the form of various patterns that can be randomly spread over the entire spectrum. As in the case of L band or they can be systematic like the systematic patterns that are sweeping across different frequencies in the X band case. Or a localized signature as in the C band. So R F I artifacts can vary randomly from one process image to another depending on the R F I characteristics, what kind of the R F I characteristics are present in the frequency domain. So the different kind of, you can say artifacts, you will be able to see in the processed images. And the R F I suppression improves the sigma not significantly in the low S N R regions. As we have seen, the improvement in the average power across different low S N R regions for various cases. And then it further, this is also what we studied for one of our papers in, in G A S two thousand twenty one. Where we studied this impact in the L and S band airborne SAR. So L and S band airborne SAR, there also that huge R F I was observed, that was operated in the U S. So that flights we observed and there what we observed that it not only improves that takes average power, it also further because that was a full pole case. So there we could analyze the relative phase peak between co and cross pole uh channels. So there we could see that it histogram peak, that is the between the co and cross pole, that also improves because of this R F I suppression. So then that, that reference is there. And then R F I detection suppression also enhances the image contrast, the overall image radiometry, which for facilitates better target detection. And so we need to suppress, we, because there anyway sources will be there. So like for the N I S R case also, they are like, we have, we are operating at one point two five gigahertz L band. So anyways, that let us say for GPS L two, if we see that L two frequency is one point two two seven. So there is not, not much margin and we are having an eighty megahertz bandwidth mode. So whenever we are going to operate that, R F I is going to be there. So anyways, we have to develop techniques, we have to keep on improving and find new methods. Where we can, you can say detect and operate, operate and correct this R F I faster. Because then their data volumes will also be going to be large, so it is going to be a challenge in the upcoming missions also. These are the references, what we have used. This is the paper that I was referring, the third one, that is the, you can say, in the. In the SAR data and the, the last one where we have studied this in the R F I detection suppression, the L and S band airborne SAR. That is two thousand twenty one. So uh there we have discussed that part for the relative phase peak improvement. Thank you all, any questions?
Thank you, Parikshit. Can ask questions. Very important. Yes, yes.
Yes, please.
I know, it's like, does R F I, R F I affects the phase of the signal?
Yeah, it also affects, because that is why that improvement was observed for this L and S band airborne SAR case. Because that, what we see, because here it is not shown, but we observed that when you see the phase in. Yeah, so because generally we see the amplitude part, but if the phase image if you also see, but. That will also only be visible when you have, you can say it is spread over the entire spectrum or the, you can say the R F I is very large. Okay, so then what you see, there are some different kind of phase patterns you will see, some interference patterns you will see. And what will happen after R F I suppression, those patterns will disappear. So that is how we come across that it is affecting that part also.
And like it depends on ascending and descending more than.
It has nothing to do with attending descending, because anyways if the source is there, then if you operate in whether right look, right look, ascending, descending, it is going to be there.
It's going to be there, but its direction going to be changed?
No, anyways, because, because data is what you are observing from T is equal to zero to T is equal to some T notes. So that for, for a processing person, it is like that only. So it doesn't matter as, as for a person who has to, you can say, work on the R F I suppression part. It doesn't matter whether you are operating ascending, descending, because that anyways your data will come like this only, so from top to bottom.
And maybe the last question, so for example, we have suppressed R F I. Now, as a like application user, for example, we are doing for much amounting. So it's good from no data to we have some data. But is it going to have some effect on the model of, for example, side mic or something?
Yeah, actually that part we need to, that part we need to study from applications perspective. So that study it will be, this is the basically from the processing perspective we have seen. So anyways, for that L and S band airborne SAR also, we have suppressed the R F I and provided data to our application scientists. So there they are doing that analysis, so whether they will come up with some paper, that what is the effect before and after, how it is affecting and if it is adding something to it. That analysis certainly. That what is the effect before and after, how it is affecting and if it is in adding something to it, that analysis certainly can be done. From application perspective, yes, but anyways it has to be done because then because otherwise then it will severely affect the analysis.
Yeah.
So we will not be able to do anything.
Thank you. Two things.
We were actually.
So this is operationally.
Yes, this is operationally. Yeah, 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 from there only that instance of R F I was reported, uh so it came to me, so we did this.
I mean you are not supplying data uh after R F I corrections.
So sir currently that in U S zero four, it has been enabled. Yeah, that because these cases were observed, so after that earlier that uh you can say whatever the software we put earlier, it was not there in the launch time. So later on because we first need to observe whether it is coming or not, so we see certain cases. Okay, so it is like N R S is monitoring that, so they are observing that there is a product quality check team also. So it was reported that some kind of patterns are visible, so we just asked them and we share the data, so then we did the analysis, we have created the software.
One we don't specify, sir, and then data.
They observed few cases uh for M R S mode also and F R S mode also. So then we analyze those cases and then we have applied that now that algorithm is in place, so anyways it will uh if it is present then it will correct.
Uh if you project the how you will detect, if present, not present like that.
Sir currently that the algorithm is like uh basically is a statistics based algorithm. So it will be based on the the statistics it will detect, like for it it was defined at uh Z S statistic for ninety nine point five percent. Distribution we are taking, so we are taking that margin of point five percent about that it is going to be an argument. So that.
So we asked there, then you will corrupt the data in that way. You cannot use for internal.
No, no, sir, by by internal.
Once you filter apply a fifty and it will filter the original data also, understand?
Yeah.
And you apply inverse seventy or fifty delta. It will corrupt.
But anyways that phase is corrupted sir, because because if you going to do in SAR, then uh you are not able to retrieve anything. It will only improve your thing.
But Sentinel is not doing like that.
No, Sentinel is also doing, they have also in if you see there is level one eighty G D, there is a chapter on R F I detection uh and suppression. So they have implemented their approach maybe different slightly, they are using that you can say rank echoes they are using. Uh they they have seen pulses in air, we just transmit, so there rank echoes they are using for R F I detection and then they are doing it.
No, no, we reported them, this image is not good or maybe.
They may not be doing it operationally, I am not sure of that.
Military radar.
It is part of their.
The military radar might have corrected, we cannot do like that.
We have to. Currently like thing is that sir, uh for that purpose only like in the launch time we don't put this kind of uh we just uh. Uh we are putting that provision into the software, but we are not uh enabling it. So then when instances are reported, so then we are uh putting that, yeah. So like N I S R case now what is happening, so there uh as we have been in discussions with the J P L team also. So now they are they are planning that they will put this for the entire thing. So they will put whether that there for all acquisitions they will put, so that is a part of their algorithm document of.
And you mentioned in your report.
Yes, sir.
Before that algorithm is ever some already implemented.
Yes, sir, this algorithm is what we have developed, so this is uh you can say effort in this.
The third one, huh, yes.
So that uh we have already presented.
No, this is. That is different from others.
Yeah, this is actually uh you can say, so we have put uh basically it is based on the second algorithm, second one. So we have built on some enhancements into that, okay, so there uh we like in the second one, we are using a simple noise filtering. So here like we are not using simply a noise filtering, we are taking some neighborhood statistics.
Okay.
Okay, so we are because not we want to disturb the energy of that data also because that will affect the calibration part also. So we are just uh taking the distribution and we are just uh filling those values.
Maybe one more question.
Yes, please, please.
So uh R F I detection and then mitigation. So over the urban areas, that you have it depends uh you are using a neighborhood statistic.
Hmm.
So that mitigation is difficult in urban areas compared to that.
No, no, actually that is in the spectrum part, so spectrum part you don't have to bother about whether that is processed region or not.
Okay.
Okay, so any, if you will see from a different perspective, if I see in urban areas only that problem is going to be there.
Yeah.
So anyways from spectrum part you see that whatever the neighboring region where R F I is not flagged, so that portion is used. In the spectrum for this uh estimation of the statistics for correction. So we just first identify the mass and then leaving that mass we identify that region and we use their statistics to correct this.
R F I is. Obviously, not all of us keep persons.
Correct.
Yes. And like do we have any plan for using R F I data for similar applications like adding to find military radars or those sort of.
That.
It's a noise for people, but it's a.
Yeah, agreed, but uh that is a very valid point, actually we wanted to take that study. But actually for that you need to have uh you can say close association with many agencies. Because you cannot that do that alone because you will have some instances. Now uh because this Doppler weather radar that case that has been discussed, okay, so that uh our Thelo team analyzed that also. And uh they came up with this thing that finally jointly it was discussed and uh this analysis was done and then it was found that okay this. Radar is operating here, so you need to have that kind of information also. Because then Doppler weather radar may not be important from strategic perspective, but then military radar is important. So you got to have those informations also, so that is a very useful analysis, but you then need to have that all that information available. To do that kind of thing.
Okay.
Yes, yes, please, sir.
Then when you said the uh R F I suppression.
Hmm.
So then you would that you mean to say that there is some still residual uh still related there?
Yeah, uh that is only always going to be there, so hundred percent suppression that much uh that anyways any algorithm cannot do. Okay, so because then uh uh you have to build some uh thresholds into that. Okay, so that you can tune dynamically, but then anyways because that will also depend on data statistics. So when you everything is based on data, because you don't have any other thing, you have to analyze the data and you have to do some uh you can say analysis and based on that you have to do the correction. So that is why suppression we are calling because we cannot hundred percent remove anything.
So if I understand, I understand, number was that understand correct, then you are doing at the chip level.
Uh we are doing it at the raw data level.
You are chip.
Raw data level. Chirp is separate chirp is used for the compression, right?
How it level.
Only raw data level, whatever raw data that we have received from the ground on that we are doing it. So that is also because sometimes what happens in L and S band airborne SAR cases, what we observed that in few cases it was so much affected. That the Doppler centroid estimation also goes worse, so in that case your image focusing also goes bad. So if you don't apply this part, then you are not able to focus your image also properly. So this becomes important for those cases where it is very severely affected, you don't have any other option, you have to do that. Because otherwise you will not be able to form a proper image in itself.
Then uh other question to it is it will have in the presence of R F I. Then do we can we do any in SAR related applications or it will have?
That analysis uh actually is uh we need to do that also, so we will be doing that, so we have that in mind for N I S R case, so we will do that.
Also we had some uh presentation on bias.
Okay.
And also there is a discussion of kind of R F I related thing.
Hmm hmm.
So then again they were talking.
That is in our things to do for this N I S R mission also, so we will be taking up that, we know that.
Thanks.
Okay, now there is a question from an online participant.
Yes, yes, please, please.
So Indran Mishra is asking that uh R F I signatures can be extracted using deep learning models, uh have you explored that area?
Yeah, deep learning models we have not explored, so that certainly that models can be used. Okay, but uh thing is that for models like you have to pump in some larger um significant amount of data to train the model. So yes, you can do that, there is like uh from fundamental perspective we see you just. But then you have to see also that whether uh you can say for an X satellite, if you are using that data and training your model, whether it is uh. Uh working for some Y satellite or not, that also you need to check. Okay, and then you need to have some certain significant amount of data set to train your model. So like if you are operating and if on the uh you can say day one that your day ten some instance is coming. So if you don't have an algorithm based on data, then uh you may not be able to do it. So that is also one of the options that can certainly be explored and uh yes, it's potentially certainly there.
Uh I hope that was uh is there any follow up from Indran Mishra?
Okay.
Oh, I think that's.
That's that's up, I think ten minutes, it is thirteen minutes. But somebody really great present that's up from Mishra, nice presentation, very good part. We thank you, the nice presentation and now uh um we will go with better.
Thank you to uh Dr. Y S, Y S Rao and Dr. Avik Bhattacharya here and all the presenters and participants as well.